Three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then, upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please go ahead and call roll.
Good evening, commissioners. Bernstein?
Here.
Buzza?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Fernandez? Handy?
Here.
Kress?
Here.
Lauk? Powell? Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
All right, thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, our first item, and only item of business, is 2A, City of Tampa redistricting, City of Tampa Council redistricting 2022. And the presenter is Yasser Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, you're muted.
Good evening. How y'all doing? This is Yasser Gonzalez, Planning Commission. Today, we're going to be, you see my video now. I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen with the presentation. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes, indeed. Once again, this is Yasser Gonzalez, Planning Commission staff. Some of you have been on the Planning Commission for some time. So you may remember back in January 2018, we came to you with a similar presentation in terms of like, we have modified, we proposed a modification of the single-member council district for the City of Tampa. And that was ahead of the 2019 elections. Now, we come back to you, ahead of the 2023 elections, to make a similar modifications. So this presentation, we're just going to go over the process, what we've done so far, and then what's next. And then, you know, where are we at right now in terms of like concluding this project? Any questions before I start? So the agenda, we have the timeline, of course, of the project. We have some basic informations about the Tampa City Council, what are single-member districts, things like that. Why do we have to do this? Why are we upsetting all these people? And some rules, the process that we went through, and of course, our recommendation, the staff recommendation. The first thing is the redistricting process timeline. So far, you may vaguely or remember that we came to you sometime in October, early October, at your October meeting. And we pledged to go into a comprehensive outreach effort. We've developed alternatives, and we were going to go out and solicit feedback from potentially affected voters. And we've done that. And we're going to explain later how we did that. So today is the first of two public hearings. So the given is just an information item for this meeting. The City of Tampa redistricting process. First of all, let's talk about the governing structure for the City of Tampa. It's a strong mayor and city council system. There are seven council members. Districts 1, 2, and 3 are at large, which means they cover the entire city. Now, districts 4, 5, 6, and 7 are so-called single-member districts. That means that they are, you know, geographically defined, and they have a council person that represents them. Why do we do this? First of all, it's required by law. It's also required in the City of Tampa charter. And every four years, hence, we're coming back to you. We were here in January 2018, and we come back to you in March 2022. And this is ahead of the next election, which is approximately a year or so from now, March 7, 2023, that's the scheduled date. What are the legal requirements? First of all, you as the body, we make a recommendation to you, and you approve a new boundary. That will be your task, your role here. Then, the supervisor of elections will proclaim these districts. And at the end, we go to the City of Tampa and just let them know what the new boundaries are. Again, we are holding, we are required to hold two public hearings. So this is the first of two. We are moving entire voting precincts. So that way, if you keep, you know, as a border, you will continue to operate as you are. The only difference might be that if the recommendation or any other other three alternatives are approved by the commission, then you will be potentially represented by a new council person. We are observing, you know, timed, you know, tested concepts such as completeness of districts, compactness, and congruity. That is, you know, we're trying to avoid gerrymander as much as practicable.
Bye. I'll talk to you tomorrow.
In a population, again, of every single-member district, what we're trying to do is, you know, they, as we are fast-growing areas, they tend to diverge. So some districts are growing faster than others, as you are well aware. And what we're trying to do is bring them closer together. That's essentially what this exercise is doing. What are other considerations? Unlike, you know, there's a lot of upheaval usually around the time because some, in the case of, let's say, Congress, some congresspersons may be redistricted out of office. We do not do this for the City of Tampa. So we keep the council person's voting precinct in the current district they represent. We also tend to be a conservative approach. So you see that we have really surgical moves, really not a lot of upheaval. Just, you know, just a fraction of the voters are affected. Because again, we do this so often that we don't have to do drastic changes. And again, we also are very conservative in the way we move. And we just minimize any negative impact that we may be aware of. Equal population. There's some confusion about this. The standard is total population, not voting age population, not population by race. Total population is the standard. And by the city charter, we are required to use the latest and greatest census data product, which happens to be Census 2020, total population. So that is, that's what we're using. Now, the concept of a range, that's a little bit nebulous for, especially if you're not doing with a lot of math and statistics. But what that shows us is the percent difference between the most populous district and the least populous district. And it's the key measure that we use, or, you know, a lot of other efforts use the same to see, what we do, and we're going to go over that again, is minimize this range. So it's a lot of numbers in this chart. There are two key points that you need to take away. First of all, notice that there, that's 5.6% is the coding range for the status quo or current situation. We deem it too high, therefore, we need to lower it. Notice that every alternative that follows has a significantly lower range. And that's what we're trying to do. Another point that you're trying to get is for those of you keeping tabs, it's around 96,000 people per district. That makes the population of Tampa around 390,000 people. So if you keep the 2020 population, 390,000-plus people. Those of you keeping tabs, they, I'm just giving you a trivia there. What do we do with each alternative? Each alternative is, we want to reduce the range below 5%. And we've seen that all four alternatives have done so. We're moving precincts, entire voting precincts, from most populous districts to least populous districts. As you know, from the City of Tampa has a somewhat peculiar shape, elongated, going north. So not every council district has a boundary with every other district. Therefore, we have some sort of finite moves that we can make. And you will see that, you know, it's only a few things that we can really, you know, juggle around. Retrogression, not a common word, but what it means is the following. We are one to avoid that, and most redistricting efforts want to avoid that. That is, for traditionally underrepresented voting blocks, such as blacks, African-Americans, or Hispanic, Latinx voters, we are trying to not dilute their chair of votes for wherever they are strongest. So in the case of Council District 5, traditionally, you know, African-American voters have been at least 50%. All alternatives are observing that. In the case of Districts, Council District 6, you know, Hispanic, Latinx voters have been at least 24%. We are keeping, you know, alternatives are meeting that requirement. So right now, again, there are four alternatives. This is like the, you know, the harder part of the presentation as we go through each alternative. But again, only if you will bear and be patient with us as we go over the alternatives. And again, these alternatives have been described in more detail in the report that we submitted to you. So in case you want to go over that in more detail, you're on, you can go ahead. And of course, you know how to reach me, and I can, I'll be happy to sit down with you one-on-one to discuss this, if you're more comfortable that way. So anyhow, so we are going to go over this very quickly, though. Alternative 1, we're moving 2 precincts, 249 from Council District, 7 to Council District 6, and 250 from Council District 7 to Council District 6. This is the map right here. These precincts are here towards the northern part, and at Ambush Boulevard, you know, Lime Bowl and North Boulevard. And we're moving them over again from Council District 7 to Council District 6. And that's, that's alternative 1. And this is just giving you a look for the citywide. Alternative 2, we're having two moves here. Precinct 318 moving from Council District 5 to Council District 6, and 338 moving from Council District 7 to Council District 5. Notice the populations, again, around 96,000 average population. These numbers that we're moving in terms of population are fairly small, but not surprising. We are only moving the range from 5 to around 3 or less. So not a lot of movement will be taking place again. Two precincts here, two precincts there. We're swapping some precincts, not a big deal. Now, the, here's the map of alternative 2. Loss up again, 338 and 318 moving. This is a map of the citywide. Alternative 3, again, this is just a swapping. We are moving precinct 131 and 145 from Council District 4 to Council District 6, and precinct 139 from Council District 6 to Council District 4. Again, just swapping them. This is what it looks like. These precincts are mainly south of, you know, in the south Tampa area. And again, this is what we are, this is what they look like citywide. And the last alternative that we're going to talk about, again, only four alternatives, the surgical moves around. This is again another swap. We're moving precincts 117 and 133 from Council District 4 to Council District 6, and 137 from 6 to 4. So that's what it looks like again, same area, south of Kennedy, south of Swan Avenue. That's what we're moving, and this is what it looks like citywide. Now, what is staff recommending? This is the slide that tells, we are recommending alternative 2. The alternative 2, to remind you, we're moving voting precinct 318 from Council District 5 to Council District 6, and 338 from Council District 7 to Council District 5, has the lowest range and yields the most African-American and Hispanic voters in District 5 and 6 respectively. This is again, a lot of numbers here. We apologize, but again, this is a very numbers-heavy exercise. So again, notice here in the second, from the left column, the range at 3.2. So again, we're good here. We were at 5.6, now we're 3.2, yay. And then, we go into the percentage of African-American and black voters are at 51%, the highest that we could have mustered. As well as the, for Council District 6, the Hispanic percentage at 24 again, among the highest. We have gone, as I said earlier, since October, we have been reaching out to community groups, stakeholders, neighborhood associations, the, you know, the NAACP, the Hispanic Services Council, the Women's Board, Hills Board of Republicans, Hills Board of Democrats, and everyone that wanted, that we wanted to say, hey, we're available to discuss this with you. We've reached out to them, we made phone calls, we emailed, and we send letters in many cases. So again, we're reaching out. We had a website in English and Spanish, and our technical report was in English and Spanish, presentations in English and Spanish. So again, we were out there, reaching out, whoever wanted to hear this information. And last, well, not last, but last, the next item is that hosted a four, four in-person open houses. They were, we thank Hills Board of County Schools, and we thank the library services for being so generous and providing the excellent facilities for us to host this. And again, we, whatever possible and practicable, we held these meetings, in-person meetings, at or near the precincts that were going to be changing hands. And they were done on alternate week, with the evenings. So again, for people that were out of work, you know, they were three hours long, so. There were also two on Saturdays, two virtual open houses, two hours each. And again, we was out there, and we went over this presentation or similar presentation with them. We cannot thank enough, and we're going to thank them again, the supervisor of election staff, and others, we're going to mention them again. They were there with us. They were there answering more technical questions about voting, about their precincts, and also offering, you know, voter registration services. And again, press releases were provided to newspapers, and also advertisements, advertisements or advertisements replacing newspapers. So we're done with presenting the alternative. We have done the staff recommendations. So again, just to add a fresh year on where are we? Comprehensive outreach effort have been completed. We have gone and spoken with, you know, council members in the City of Tampa. We presented to the whole city council. They have had a chance to meet with us. You know, we talked to their staff. Today, March 14, is the first of two public hearings. The second one will be April 4. That's when you will give your seal of approval to one of the alternatives. And then, the next will be, we will try to get the supervisor of elections to do a proclamation that next month as well. And we're shooting for May for City Council. It can be later, we have until November. But again, you know, those that know me, earlier is better. So definitely, May will be my preferred day. So key dates, again, you, your blessing is required by April, I mean, by June 10, 2022. But again, we're coming to you in April, that way gives you ample time. Then, after approval, we would, we will send a signed resolution to the supervisor of elections for proclamation. And again, we'll go ahead to, we'll try to go to the City of Tampa in the May or June of this year. We cannot be more thankful for our partners. First of all, the supervisor of elections, they're being there hand in hand. Even Mr. Latimer, you know, those of you that know him, he knows a very handsome person. He was there, at least in one of the workshops out there, greeting participants. And, you know, again, help me now. The City of Tampa City Office of City Attorney, again, always there. I like to get through confirmations usually whenever I do something. One is from legal, and one is from finance. So as long as the lawyers are happy, we're moving forward. And they were, they kept a surprise of any, any issues and any potential problems. So we kept us out of trouble. Excellent. Thank you for that. And again, Hills Board of County Public Schools, they were able to lend us their facilities, and also library services for lending us their fabulous facilities. If you haven't had a chance to go to the library recently, I mean, there's just amazing facilities that we have there for the public enjoyment. Again, you, as a body, recommend and approve the redistricting plan for Tampa, new boundaries. We have proposed four alternatives, but we have recommended alternative 2 for you. 16 hours of, you know, of, you know, work, open houses, if you will. And today is the first of two public hearings. The next one is April 4. And we are giving your recommendation for alternative 2 for approval. Again, this is my primary contact information. Again, if you notice a lot of information, that memo was also fairly comprehensive. So if you would like to have a one-on-one briefing, I'm happy to do so. Happy to do so. So you know how to reach me, here's my information. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the thorough presentation. See if we have anybody sign up for the public comment on this item. I don't believe so. No one signed up for this one, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions or discussions. Commissioner Kress, please.
Thank you. Yasser, thank you for all the information. I'm curious, over the years, I'm sure you must track which little kind of precincts move from district to district? And is it a goal to kind of avoid the last one that you moved? You know what I mean? Like, do people keep getting switched back that are on the border between some of the individual council districts?
We, yes, indeed, we try to not do that. But again, we are depending on the statistics, on the numbers that we use. And these numbers are, you know, from the census, and as the census numbers changes. So, you know, we do try to correct some things. And, you know, and again, as you correct some things, there are others. It's like that famous cartoon where you plug a hole, and the water comes out of the other one. It's similar to that. But again, we do try not to be switching the same precincts, yes.
And if I might ask a follow-up, it looked like you did a good job of reaching out to specific groups that would probably care about this. Were you also recommending alternative 2, and did they concur?
No, at that point, we were very open-minded in terms of like, we did not want to, you know, bias the process. So at that point, we were not making any recommendations. We were just presenting the four alternatives as they were. However, you know, for the commission, we will be making other recommendations right now. So at that point, they asked us about it, and we're like, we're not recommending anything at this point. But what we would like for you, from you to, like, what would you recommend? And that's where you get the feedback that we've included in the appendix of the report. So for some of the attendants, I mean, attendees that have provided feedback, that's there for you, for you to peruse at your leisure.
So you factored in all of that input into your recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress. Good questions. Any more questions or comments from the commissioners on this item? All right, not seeing any. We will thank you for your time, Mr. Gonzalez, and move on to our next item, which is no item, adjournment. So I guess the meeting's adjourned. Bear with me for a second here while I read us into our next meeting. Welcome, everybody, to the March 14, 2022 public hearings of the Planning Commission on the City of Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. To minimize feedback in the audio, all participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should raise their hand or unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted. When it is your turn to speak, please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. That's planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then, upon a motion, a second and discussion, a vote will be taken. And with that information conveyed, I will ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Bernstein?
Here.
Buzza?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Fernandez? Handy?
Here.
Kress?
Here.
Lauk? Powell? Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, first item of business, 2A, PC CPA 21-08, Future Land Use Map Amendment, north of North Frontage Road, west of Proke Street. And the presenter is Krista Kelly.
Thank you, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I will pull this up for you. Can everybody see the screen, the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm presenting Plant City CPA 2108. This is a future land use map amendment. The site, as you can see in the, on the vision map to your right, is identified by the gold star. It's in the northern portion of Plant City. It abuts the city limits of Plant City. More specifically, it's north of North Frontage Road and I-4, south of East Terrace Drive, east of Frontage Park Place, and west of Proke Street. To give you a little background, this is a privately initiated map amendment. It's 2.2 acres approximately in size. It's considered a small scale because it is less than 50 acres. The site, the applicant is requesting a change from the Hillsboro County land use category of suburban mixed-use 6 to a Plant City industrial land use category. The site, I might also add, is pending a voluntary annexation action. This is the adopted future land use map. And as you can see by the blue dotted line, everything to the west of that or left of that line is within Plant City and is designated industrial. Outside of Plant City, including the site, the majority of the area surrounding the site is designated suburban mixed-use. And then, further to the north, the area transitions to residential 1. This is the proposed map, showing the site first annexed within Plant City and then designated Plant City Industrial, which is identical to the surrounding land use categories. The impact of the land use change to Plant City industrial designation would be primarily the elimination of residential development potential on-site. Currently, 13 dwelling units could potentially be developed. However, under the category of industrial in Plant City, no residential is allowed. The FAR remains the same at point FAR under both categories, which would allow a maximum of 47,916 square feet of light industrial uses. This is an aerial, just to give you some sort of context and feeling for the surrounding area. The subject property is outlined in this pink dotted line. It's currently undeveloped. It is adjacent to the I-4 Business Center Park Place in this area. It is an industrial park that is almost completely built out with warehouses, offices, and distribution centers. This is I-4 and Frontage Road. And to the east, Proke Street, which is more of a local roadway, and Terrace Drive to the north. This is street view of these roadways. Looking from Terrace Drive south, this is a warehouse that is adjacent to the site on its northern boundary. It's a warehouse, and it has a fence lot with a number of vehicles. Again, to the west of the site, the site would be in this tree area. The, this is the industrial park that I just mentioned, running along the western boundary of the site. And this is looking south towards Frontage Road. So in this case, the subject property would be to the left here. This is Frontage Road, North Frontage Road, looking east towards Proke Road. And then, this is looking west, towards Paul Buckman Highway, another major arterial. As you can see, going west, the area is quite industrial. This is Proke Road on the eastern side of the subject property. This is a picture or a photograph looking in at the subject property. It's within this wooded area in the distance. And this is looking down Proke Road towards Frontage Road. And you can see it's relatively undeveloped. And as you continue further eastward, you'll see that the area transitions into a more agricultural rural character. Staff reviewed it for consistency with the objectives and policies of the Plant City Comprehensive Plan and found it consistent with a number of sections related to enhanced hometown charm, which deals with the preservation of the character of Plant City through orderly growth, annexation, dealing with encouraging consistent development, consistent with the vision map of Plant City, growth management and the provision of public facilities, dealing with promoting sound growth management strategies, intergovernmental coordination, dealing with coordination with regulatory agencies and adjacent jurisdictions, economic development, dealing with promoting job growth and smart growth, and the mobility element, transportation policies, dealing with promoting transportation networks that enhance the economic development potential and orderly growth in Plant City. This amendment was distributed for agency comment. No objections were received. A few comments worth noting, Plant City's utility department noted that water and wastewater services can be met with available capacity. And the Environmental Protection Commission noted a small creek bisects the subject site, and there may be wetlands present, and these areas will be addressed and regulated by EPC at the time of development. This is the timeline for this amendment. Following this meeting, the proposed amendment will go to the planning board in Plant City on March 23rd. And then following that meeting, with their recommendation, it will go to the city commission. That date is to be determined in coordination with the companion annexation and rezoning actions. Based on the review of this plan amendment, staff, Planning Commission staff recommends that CPA 2108 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan, and that that recommendation is forwarded to the Plant City Commission. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
I'm sorry, yes, the applicant is here and does have a brief presentation.
Yes, I am Erica Craig. Let me turn my video back on. And I'm at 607 South Alexandria Street. And if you bear with me one second, I will share my screen. Can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So I am presenting for PCCPA 2108, which is a future land use map amendment. And thank you, Krista, for detailing her request. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that you mentioned and give a little bit more background. First, the location of the site, which is pointed out here by this little arrow, is located directly north of I-4 and between Paul Buckman Highway and North Park Road. And it's in this area that has been recently growing with commercial development along the I-4 corridor due to its proximity to major roadways and central quarter location. So this development, I just wanted to point that out because it will be consistent with that commercial growth in this area. So locally, I'm showing a series of aerials going back about 15 years, showing how this area has been growing commercially. Also, an industrial park starting and it's growing now to the east a little bit more. And just wanted to touch on again, our current future land use under the county is suburban mixed use 6. And the proposed future land use pending annexation with the city would be industrial, which is consistent with what's around it. And our FAR is the same with the current and the proposed. It doesn't change from FAR point five. Just to show a little bit more detail about sort of why we are making this requested change. This is the existing site plan. And the subject parcels are outlined in red. And then this yellow line is showing where the current boundary between the city and the county is. The blue outlined area is the property that's all owned by the current property owner. And you can see that the boundary kind of splits right through this area. And the owner's intent is to be able to expand the current businesses. There's two existing buildings to the southwest. And the proposed parcels that we are requesting the future land use change would, if approved, all put this underneath one land use that would all be the same, that would allow the development. And then just wanted to point out to the east of here is another industrial use. Directly to the north is another industrial use. And to the west is that industrial part. So just simply wanted to show what is proposed, which would be everything united under one future land use and zoning and jurisdiction with the city. So the boundary would move to the future land use would allow the proposed development of additional buildings for this property owner. That I will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, see if we have anybody sign up for public comment on this one. I'll turn it over. We have one person, which was you, Erica Craig. I'm going to say it anyway, just to make sure you don't have any comments that you want to give beyond that.
Further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that was the only person we had sign up for public comments. I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein, yes.
Thanks. Perhaps I could just call upon you to confirm this. Am I correct that, in my understanding, that the only significant implication of the proposal would be to constrain the use of this property to industrial purposes as opposed to industrial and residential? I mean, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. Based on the land use category, it eliminates residential development as a primary use. It does allow for accessory uses to support an industrial setting such as an office, but it's fairly limited.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments from the commissioners on this item? Not seeing any lights in the room or any hands being raised online. I'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. I'd like to move that we find PCCPA 2108 consistent with Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan and forward this to the Plant City Commission. And a motion of consistency finding, my commissioner buzzer, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cardenas with a second to that motion. There any more discussion of this item from the commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Buzzer?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. All right, our next item up, looks like it was continued to be PCCPA 2109, Future Land Use Map Amendment, has been continued. So we will move on to our next item, 2C, PCCPA 21-10, Future Land Use Map Amendment, east of Charlie Taylor Road, north of Swindell Road. And the presenter is Mr. Mark Hudson.
Do you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Right. Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. This is the last plan amendment we are here this evening to hear. It is a PCCPA 21-10. Like Krista's presentation a moment ago, this shows you the location of this map amendment on the vision map of Plant City. It is located more specifically south of Midway Road, east of Charlie Taylor Road, north of Swindell Road, and west of the Polk County Line indicated by the star on the vision map. This is, of course, also in the northeast of Plant City and part of their northeast master plan. This is an aerial of the site that shows a little bit more specifically of the character of the area in question and also the surrounding lands. The plan amendment is surrounded by the lavender dashed line. And you can see it's primarily in agricultural uses, passive agricultural uses right now. Surrounding it are other lands in agricultural uses and also some large lot, more rural-style residential development. Little bit of background, this is privately initiated, as was the last one. It's regular scale coming at 105 acres, so there will be that added step if the city commission so chooses to send this to for a review by the Department of Economic Opportunity before final action. It is, current's land use is Hillsborough County Residential 1, and the applicant has requested Plant City Residential 4. Plant City Residential 4 does allow for four dwelling units to acre as a maximum build-out. It also does not allow any non-residential uses, even if it met locational criteria. So commercial uses would not be allowed. This is the future land use map as it stands today. In this case, the affected area is surrounded by the black dashed line. You can see the light green color of the area, which represents that Hillsborough County Residential 1 land use category. You can see surrounding it on almost all the sides, that same land use category of Hillsborough County Residential 1. This is a pending voluntary annexation into the municipality. To the northwest, you can see the yellow color, which represents Plant City Residential 4. That is the southern tip of the new development called Viera. It's approved for about 2,600 units. And it does have some mixed use components a little bit further north off the screen. But in this area, they're looking at residential development up to that four to use an acre. I'll also note the area that's shown white on the attached, on the map before you, that is signified as a transitional area, meaning it has already completed the annexation process into Plant City. However, it has not gone through a land use change like we're working on with this applicant. So it still retains its Hillsborough County Residential 1 plan category until such time as that land use change is applied for and goes through and ultimately approved by the city commission. And this shows you how that color would change if it was approved for the residential 4, basically the same plan category that has been approved for Viera to the northwest. I will note that you can see the dashed blue line is representing the city's jurisdictional boundaries. So we did review this based on maximum build-out, as we typically do. Currently, it would allow for 105 dwelling units in unincorporated Hillsborough County with that R1 land use category. This would increase to 420 dwelling units. I have some aerials and some photographs of the area, just again to give you the character of the surrounding lands and the affected lands itself. This is another aerial showing you those passive agricultural uses that are currently on the site. This is looking northeast from Charlie Taylor Road across to the site. And this is the primary access point, Charlie Taylor Road. It's a north-south collector, and this is looking south on Charlie Taylor Road. And this is just turning around the camera around and looking north on Charlie Taylor Road. Though the property doesn't actually abut Swindell Road, this is the nearest road to the south. It has some of the large lot residential development. And I just thought I'd give you an idea of the character of some of these homes that are in this area. This is looking east on Swindell Road. And this is looking west on Swindell Road. So our staff did review this per the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. We looked at a number of policies, and I'll just note a few here. The complete goals, objectives, and policies are noted in your packet. We looked at policies related to neighborhood conservation, and these ones in particular related to the city offering a variety of housing types, enhanced hometown charm. These policies relate to the applicant's proposal and its consistency with the northeast master plan. And I do have a slide a little bit later in my presentation to go over that with you. Of course, I already noted that this is a pending voluntary annexation into Plant City. And of course, we looked at the policies related to annexation and felt that they were being fulfilled. Growth management, again, these are policies to ensure that a public facility is available and that we're not promoting urban sprawl in areas that the city is not anticipating and serving. Of course, they looked at this area in particular when they did the northeast master plan. Again, we also looked at the policy specifically related to the provision of public facilities. We did particularly reach out to the utilities department to determine if there was water or waste product capacity to serve this area, which they indicated there was. Agricultural compatibility, we do expect the areas around this to remain for some time in agricultural uses. And based on the policies in Plant City's plan, those uses can continue, even if this was developed residentially and would even be allowed to expand. Intergovernmental coordination, there are some wetlands on the site. We'll be coordinating the protection of those wetlands with the Environmental Protection Commission of Hillsborough County. And there's also some potential road improvements that need to be made, particularly on Charlie Taylor Road. And we would be coordinating those with Hillsborough County. And also, we would note the policies that relate to mobility and the impacts this may generate on the local transportation system. Again, we are coordinating those with Hillsborough County at the zoning stage. And I would note that Plant City is a transportation concurrency exceptionary. Earlier, I mentioned concerning the northeast master plan, and this is the preferred land use scenario of the northeast master plan. And you can see the dashed black line that signifies the area that's affected by this plan amendment. Now, the northeast master plan is a guide. It's a first cut of what the city envisions for this area. It was 22 square miles. It, we really didn't have the ability to drill down to the parcel level, but still, it's a good first cut of whether we feel something is appropriate or not. Now, what this has shown on this map is that the majority of the property in the northeast master plan reflects the R4 plan category that the applicant has requested. There is some lands to the south where the northeast master plan envisioned greater densities, residential 12 or 12 units an acre. And to the north, there were some areas where they envisioned continued agricultural uses, particularly those that are impacted by floodplains and environmentally sensitive lands. But our feeling was that, again, it's a guide, and we felt that the applicant's request blended these three uses together and ultimately fulfills the vision that was established for the northeast master plan as part of that review. We did reach out to other groups to get their comments. We did know from the Hillsborough County School District that there is currently a lack of school capacity in this area. Now, when the applicant goes through and develops their site plan or they plant the property, they'll have to go through that concurrency process to ensure that those student stations are available before any of those homes are occupied. So that's a process that they'll have to go through in the future. I will note that we received an objection from the Hillsborough County Community and Infrastructure Planning Department. And in particular, they objected based on the lack of an in-depth transportation analysis being submitted in conjunction with the application for the land use plan amendment. Now, typically, that is not done in the city of Plant City. They require that analysis at a later stage. Now, typically, that is not done in the city of Plant City. They require that analysis at a later stage, which is through the the zoning process. And in particular, in this case, it seems to be fortuitous in the sense that the actual zoning, which I've been provided, is only envisioning about 200 homes versus the 400 homes that we we analyze based on the maximum build out. So it seems that that would be more appropriate time to do that analysis, and the city doesn't intend to coordinate that analysis and the results with the county at that time. The water and wastewater services, I already mentioned, the utility department feels there's the capacity to serve that. And I also noted that the wetlands on the northern extreme of the site will need to be protected per the requirements of the Environmental Protection Commission. With that, the planning commission, we're here tonight to garner your recommendation on this plan amendment. We'll be giving a similar presentation to the planning board on March 23rd, that's Wednesday, and at 8:30 in the morning at City Hall, and we look forward and invite anyone who wants to participate in that discussion. This will require a transmittal hearing, which will be on April 25th, 7:30 in the evening at City Hall as well. We have not yet set the adoption hearing date to wait to see when the the zoning will be prepared and ready to go in conjunction with this, since that is a city policy for both the land use change and the zoning to be heard at the same hearing night. With that, planning commission staff recommends that PCCPA 21-10 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Plant City Conference of Plan and afford this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. And before I I finish, I just did want to follow up with a question that was posed to me during the briefing by Commissioner Crest. And she inquired about the city's position and how they're moving forward with providing transit services in Plant City. I did reach out to the city administration. Of course, the TPO developed a transit report for them just last year, and they are still studying that. They do anticipate putting the question at some point to the residents of Plant City as part of a referendum to be a participatory in the Heartline Services. They did not, they indicated to me they don't see this occurring in the near future, but at a later date. So the impression I got from them is probably not 2022, but 2023. And that's the information that they were able to provide me in in response to Commissioner Crest's question from last month. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Does the applicant have a presentation to give?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Hopefully, y'all can see my screen.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Alexis Crespo, Planner with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm here representing the applicant, Taylor Morrison of Florida. I have several team members available for any questions you may have following the presentation, including the applicant. Mark has done a great job. Thank you, Mark, for walking through the details of the proposal, so I won't belabor our location north of I-4 and on the east side of Charlie Taylor Road. We are 105 acres. Mark noted that this is in the process of being annexed into the city of Plant City. If not for a noticing error, we would be on that agenda this evening before the city commission getting incorporated into the municipal boundary. But that will go forward on April the 11th in order to finalize the annexation process. As Mark noted, we are looking to concurrently bring the property into the R4 Future Land Use category, which is the lowest density Future Land Use category available in Plant City, converting that from R1 currently in Hillsborough County. That does allow for upwards of 420 dwelling units. The companion plan development we submitted to the city and we've already received comments on seeks only 200 single-family detached dwelling units at a density just below two units per acre. So while we do have public infrastructure that has city utilities, the area is transitioning based on the large DR Porton project on the west side of Charlie Taylor Road, Varia. We are cognizant that this is still an area with some large single, large lot, single-family homes that would need to be protected. So we we are not seeking the maximum density through our companion rezone. Mark has walked you through kind of kind of the area, and there is a mix of active agriculture, which is being annexed into the city on the west side of the road, as well as lands to our immediate east, which are also a part of the annexation request. So much of this area was was intended to go into the city and is effectuating that through concurrent annexation requests. I'll note Varia is to our north and west. That is approved at 2.6 units per acre and has a total of 2,640 dwelling units. So once that comes online, certainly the character of the area will start transitioning more rapidly. Typically, we don't always get into zoning details at the comp plan amendment stage. We however, understand that the necessity to do that, just because we do have some large lot, single-family neighbors that Mark showed through some of those aerial photographs. Just so you know, the north is on the left-hand side of the screen. We oriented the the master concept plan to fit on the slide. But Charlie Taylor Road is that is at the bottom of the screen also. So you can see our residential units shown in the yellow shaded areas that will be limited to single-family detached in order to maintain compatibility and consistency with our surrounding land use pattern. Again, requesting density just below two units per acre and extensive wetland preservation and open space within the property. And it's very consistent with that northeast master plan that Mark showed you and follows along those wetlands that were anticipated in that master plan. And then clusters development on the uplands and predominantly in the southern end of the site where that residential 12 land use was intended. I'll note that as part of the PD process in Plant City, the city actually consults with a transportation engineer to review the project. So while the applicant pays that fee to the city, we don't conduct our own independent traffic study. We do have links and associates available here this evening who are working with Taylor Morrison on all their projects if if questions arise. However, we just want to note that, as Mark said, the city does not require the traffic study at the comp plan stage. It's submitted at zoning and really formalizes a study based on the exact number of dwelling units that are sought. And we are, again, well underway in that process. We also are meeting with the agency that had the objection comment. We've we've had some preliminary meetings and have another meeting scheduled to coordinate the county planning with the city's planning department, and that's going to occur on March 21st. So we'll certain certainly continue to work those issues. And at the time of adoption, when both the comp plan and rezone are together, the transportation will have been fully analyzed and evaluated. I won't go into detail because Mark did a great job of that, and also your staff report has all your goals, objectives, and policies relevant to this petition. We we are consistent with with the vision for Plant City and the master plan done in this area, again, at the lower end of the density, noting the transitional area. In terms of the school capacity, we did get a concurrency letter as part of our zoning application demonstrating capacity for the 200 dwelling units for both elementary, middle, and high school based upon not only adjacent capacity, but also planned improvements within our area. So while the 400 did trigger an issue with high school, our 200 dwelling unit count does have school concurrency per documentation from the school district. With that, we are happy to answer any questions you have. Again, this is consistent with the city's vision and all the adopted goals, objectives, and policies at play here. And we feel our our PD plan will ensure a very compatible, consistent development with the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we didn't have anybody sign up for a public comment on this item, so I will turn it right over to the commissioners for questions, comments, discussions, this item. Not seeing any lights in the room. Commissioner Handy, yes, please.
Thank you. Yeah, this appears to be consistent with the northeast master plan, but I guess the the question I have, and it it might be the same one that Commissioner Crest brought up previously, but it it doesn't seem to fall entirely in line with the growth management section, which discourages or it the point is discourage sprawl and support support infill and development only when if public facilities are available. So that it that was addressed to a degree. And like I said, it appears to be consistent with the northeast master plan, but perhaps you could just address that a little bit because it seems to comply with one, but not so much the other. And then, for example, policy 7.5.1 ensure location and timing are coordinated with public facilities. Now, sounds like they were coordinated, but is the timing such that the growth management is being addressed with a discouraging sprawl and the timing of development?
I guess I would respond or start by responding that the northeast master plan was developed back in 2007. The city was near build out. And they looked at areas where they were going to expand in the future for that residential growth in particular. And this was the area that was done, and that's why the preferred land use scenario was developed for that. And the city did anticipate expanding into those areas and making improvements, particularly dealing with water, wastewater, and transportation improvements. Noting transit, transit is not an adopted level of service in Plant City's comprehensive plan. So they did not have to actually have those services in place to serve that particular area. Actually, any type of transit service that's being envisioned for Plant City would be more near the downtown and midtown and the core of the municipality to start with than out in these areas that are experiencing more recent growth. Our projections with the planning commission estimate that Plant City is going to grow from where it is today, which is about 40,000 residents, to about 70,000 by 2045. Some of that growth is going to be internal in the sense of areas like Midtown, which is being promoted for higher residential densities. But also some more to offer a variety of housing types are going to be other areas such as this, which will be, you know, townhomes, single-family detached, and and uses of that nature. And that is what we're looking at when we see these areas that request voluntary annexation of the municipality. Do they meet those core adopted level of services? And do they comply or are consistent with the study that was done for this area back in 2007? And the applicant may want to add something to that, but or I could further expound if you wanted to follow up on any other touch of details that you may need.
May ask, was that specific to transit, or would you like me to walk through infrastructure holistically that's available to support the project or will be available to support the project at the time of site development?
No, I understood what was said about the transit. I I guess it would be the 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 part about policy 7.1.3 contiguous to existing urbanized lands only if public facilities are available. And so because that one development is approved, the Vieira, does that necessarily mean that we just keep on expanding more urbanization or more residential development east, you know, with timing issues as stated in that growth management policy?
Well, I will also add, now that you've more given a little bit more detail of the question, that Plant City does not allow development on septic tank or well. So any type of development has to be served by their public utilities department, and and this one would be served by that. And it's in their master plan to serve this area. There are areas in the northeast master plan that we do anticipate staying rural. Actually, the area that is north of this and east of Charlie Taylor Road. There's also some other areas up near Alexander Street and Nice Griffin Road. But this area in particular, the vision was to be more of a suburban residential development.
And I'll just add to that, this is actually the northeast master plan. I'm going to just zoom in on our site. Our property is this peach color. And you can see there is just a very, based on environmental factors, as as Mark noted, there's a very natural edge to development that will ensure transition through the master plan, and that's that light green area where there's a predominance of wetlands and agricultural lands that's to our north as well as to our east, which will prevent further development to the east. However, we do front on the collector roadway. We have access to water and sewer based on our 200 dwelling units. We do have capacity in schools. And we'll certainly have to demonstrate that there is still capacity available when we come for our building permits and and site plan approval before the city. And then lastly, in terms of of roadway, we will pay our mobility fees. We are in that transportation concurrency exception areas, Mark noted. And we'll undergo the study to see if any site-related improvements are required to that roadway. And all and all that will be done before any permits can be issued for vertical development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions, Commissioner Handy. Are there any more questions or discussions from the commissioners? At this point, not seeing any lights in the room or any hands being raised online. I'll go ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time I would move that we find Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21-10 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan and refer it along to the Plant City Commission for further consideration.
All right, all right. I have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, a second to that motion by Commissioner Buzza. Is there any more discussion on this item from the commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Crest?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. All right, thank you for the information and the presentations, and thank you all staff, and thank everyone for joining us. That is our last item on the agenda. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:42. Everyone, have a great evening.